Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to invite you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors Meeting for Tuesday, June sixth of two thousand and twenty-three. With us today, we have Mr. Don Crinker, Lynn Flago, myself, Mike Stein, this are your county supervisors. And Alyssa Smith, they're our county auditor. Billorn from IP and Luann, our executive assistant. Mary is here from the Town Press. And first on our agenda today is Kini, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two entrance permits here on the agenda. First one listening is Brian Madden, our class. C, that's a for a new hog building. There's one issue on the side distance from the west, so it's gonna need a hidden driveway sign from the west, but other than that, the everything else looks fine, so.
I guess my only question, you said it was a whole like a hog confinement, really?
Will be.
So do we hear anything from zoning for that or setbacks or anything like that before?
You're asking me?
Well, I guess I haven't heard of this, so I.
It depends on the size. If it's small enough, they don't have to go.
Well, that's through the matrix now. The size goes through the matrix system for. Minore applications and or control, if I should, if you will, but. As far as.
Backs and all that back, yeah. I thought still that's stipulated by the size of it as well.
I think I'm just, I just wonder because I haven't heard nothing about it.
One question I have is. When you have a hog confinement, you have a lot of semi-traffic going in out the driveway. Is there any special considerations? Or site distance from the west? How many semis are pulling out? Is there any other places driveway could go or?
Well, for the, well, it's four hundred feet, so it's, I mean, it's only a hundred feet short. I mean, it's not like it's, it's. Significantly reduced. Hundred sixty Sixth Street. I. I can't tell where the development's going. This is highlighted on the map, so I'd have to check with. Jane, looks like he signed the approval for the road informant to see where exactly it's gonna be. I can check with Jade and see exactly where it's gonna be. The hog building. I'm gonna. You're asking if the driveway can be moved east or west and group side distance.
Well, I just, when you're talking semi pulling, I don't know. Is this a driveway where they're gonna have to back in? Is this a driveway where they can pull in and turn around on the property? There's a few things like that because. When you're talking limited visibility, it may be an inclement weather fog or something. You got a semi parked on a gravel road, got to back in the driveway. You know, that kind of pops up on somebody versus maybe the semi can go in and do is turning inside the property those. Before I approve a limited site distance on a confinement like that, we just, me, those are questions that could be answered. To make sure we have limited restriction in the road, you know, versus how much is the road traveled, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I don't know. So that. You, if you're gonna have a. That's a, you know, an entrance policy revision. So if we want to revisit the policy and do it like a change to the policy. Regarding site distance and ADT and stuff, you just, it needs to be applied uniformly. So whatever you're gonna do needs to be applied uniformly. If you're gonna have, you know, say ADT threshold, like if it's, you know, over two hundred vehicles a day, you gotta have.
Okay, take that part out. I'm saying if the semi needs to stop on the gravel road and slowly back into the build into the property to load and unload. That will block the road a lot more significantly than if they can just pull off the road onto the property and turn around and do all the loading there. That's my question because I don't want to prove a little visibility driveway. Where they have to pull up and then back in the property, block, block the road for a significantly longer period of time. Yeah, that's what, that's my question to see how they.
Because of the nature of the business.
Yeah, the nature of the business. You know, if you drive in and out, that's, that's very quick. You can turn around, but when you get semis, a lot of times depending on where they're sitting and stuff, the semis have to back in off the driveway.
So, yeah, I'll have to get, I, we don't get the. The hog confinement site plan, development plan, so I don't know where the builder's gonna go or anything like that, so. That's probably a zoning, I don't know if they get that.
Yeah, so we run into this probably six months ago and we went and inspected it and I didn't see any issues where there was site distance or that it was, you know. It was, I think it was closer to the road, maybe.
They had to get a special.
Yeah, exception to it, but yeah, there was, I mean, there were just like Don said, they were pulling in, turn around, go back up to the. Confine under, pull next to it and unload feed or whatever, but I see the point, yeah.
The top width they're requesting is fifty feet and there is a tube, so to me, the first thing I think of is they placed the driveway at the top of the hill. Because they wanted to buy a tube.
Right.
This one has tubes, so if it's already being placed somewhere that has drainage. To me, there's flexibility in moving it because if it was at the top of the hill and it was a dry hill. Then, then people would fight whether you move the driveway because they don't want to buy. Paper too, right? This one already has a tube on it, so. I guess you can, we could table this, but as far as I would need to check with zoning and get a. Like, I don't know what, I don't know where the building's going in relation to the right way.
Okay, cool. I, I guess I would too. I would like to see a little bit more information. You know, I don't know that we need to table it. We just don't take no action, so we just leave it on, on the agenda for next week. And see if we can get some more information or some site.
Let's postpone it. I think most of that we postponed that since more information can be gathered and brought to us next week.
Hold your second to postpone the. Entrance permit as presented. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed nay? Motion carried.
So just for future reference, so. This kind of question would. Anything that's class C or B, you would want that information?
I don't care that it's the hog confinement. If you're talking semi-traffic going in and off a road in a limited visibility, you know. Situation, I would want to know how that traffic is gonna be going on and off the roadway. Is it gonna be backing in? Is it gonna be pulling in, you know, just to make sure? Because when you have limited visibility, the spring and the fall, you have fog, things like that. People come around a corner, it's foggy and you got a semi parked, you know, backing up slowly, it doesn't give them adequate response time. If they can just pull the semi in the property and then back up and load, do whatever, then just pull out, I got no problem with it. If they gotta back in off the road, depending on road condition, soft road, whatever. It's a lot harder. That road's gonna be blocked a lot longer, so I don't care that it's a hog confinement. I just want to know as they're putting a business.
It could be the same thing if you had multiple grain bins going there.
Grain bins or logging or. That's my, I guess my comment or question is, so your example, that would be for class B for a business. Class C for a farm, which this one is, or class D for a field, because if I'm a farmer and I'm low, a lot of times they'll pull a semi. Parallel to the road or on the road and then pull off, so.
Which that one, we can't. I mean, it's probably not really legal to park on the travel portion of a roadway. That we can't control, but.
I would say, I guess for, for me, just for my, so the next time one comes up, we don't have to table this, I'm ready. I would say. Class C and B would be, class D field, you don't know. I mean, that's just, you don't know what's gonna be used there.
But when C and B and C, just how are these trucks gonna be entering and exiting the property? Are they gonna be backing in, you know? Just so we know and can understand, you know, because technically they're gonna be blocking the road for a longer period of time, and if you have limited visibility. Or limited site difference, then you throw in weather, inclement things. It could be more of a recipe for disaster.
So it's just. Previously, we would maybe see the plan and drive, you know, physically drive by and I. You know, when this one, the last one was presented, it was. Fifty feet, I'm gonna throw a number, fifty feet closer to the road, but there was plenty of visibility. That wasn't like they were blocking anything, but we physically drove by and looked at it and. Okay with that, I gotta live with it. You guys okayed it thirty years ago, you know? I mean.
Yeah. So like if they, I mean. So whether to say if it's a semi delivering feed or picking or delivering a paw or picking up or. Or delivering hogs. You would want wherever they are gonna, wherever the, wherever the.
Facility.
You know, whatever the, the feeder bins are or the chute is far enough back that they would. Because I guess you could be a hundred feet off and maybe some cowboy would still want to pull up and then back in. I guess.
And you might get some cowboy that wants to do that, but ideally if the farmer's plan is that they can pull in and back around.
We just need to get their site development plan.
Right.
If they're planning on using the road to back in, I'm less inclined to approve a limited visibility driveway.
Well, I would do. Hopefully they'll back in off the road to begin with.
Yeah, well, you'd be surprised. That's my question.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll check with the zoning and see if I can get some more information about the development. Because we, like I said, we don't have that now, so. All right, so that one will be, what do you call that?
Postpone.
Postpone.
Till next week.
Okay. The next one is for a class D residential. Entrance on Forty-third Street. The site distances, full checkout is above five hundred, so.
Move the group.
One second.
Motion second to approve the entrance permit for Aaron Reed. Reading Murphy as presented. All those in favor, say aye. 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 opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay. Real quick. We're having a, the general safety meeting today at the shop, was over there this morning. There. That'll go from about eight thirty till about noon today. A little before noon. Update on the retrieving. We got about approximately thirty miles done, so almost three districts done, and then we'll move it up to. The other Schwenker Stur.
Bernard?
Yeah, yeah, I'm there. So, but like, so we've been doing a good job of. It is going pretty well, of like having the core group that started it here in Macocana. They go to the next one, say Baldwin. And we pull in a couple extra guys and they kind of train with the guys that have had been doing it, and then we move up to say Iron Hill and same, same kind of thing, so. We're doing a good job of cross-training guys that have done it before with the next group of guys that are gonna be doing it, so. So far, I guess, so good. We're gonna be doing, like I said, we, we go out and establish a baseline, so Jane's been going out and, and Dave and. Checking, cancel up and all that, whips and all that, so then we will do that afterwards as well to verify we're getting the, the cross-section changes that we're, we're hoping for, so.
I've had a few comments over the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, some rain would help the situation. For sure, hopefully there's a fifty-five percent chance today, right?
Hey, you're gonna drive on that, that's what I've been hearing it for seven years and I gotta get crown on the road and now you're gonna have crown on the road, this way, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it would have been nice when we made this procedural change to actually have a little moisture once in a while. Got a water truck. So we're placing a lot of rock down, right?
Yeah.
Well. It's try to begin with, and you put that much rock down, it's hard to get it not be rough and, and wash forty when you don't have any moisture, so. It's not a great situation, but. We got, we got. We got miles to do, so.
We're not the only one hoping for rain. I know that right now.
So then the other thing too is I got a request for some information from. One of the petitioners for Three Hundred Eighth Street, so I'm gonna supply that information to them, since it's generally about some. Questions about maintenance costs and everything, so I'm gonna have to do some general estimates because we don't really track that. We haven't been tracking. We're starting to track it now. But I will copy you guys with the question and information, so you'll hopefully have that. You'll have the same information that, that, that the game video will have, so.
Uh, overlay, update maybe?
So Y sixty-one. They finished, so we do a strength and leveling course first. It's a PCC pavement. Where so. If you don't have the correct cross slope of the road, it corrects that any wheel path running, which you don't really have too much with PCC. So that's basically an inch thick on average. It sets the uniform cross section. Because the next layer is the inner layer. It's a highly polymerized asphalt. It's very expensive. So that you want to have the perfect cross section, so you're laying one inch across there and not like three inches out at the edge and one inch in the middle kind of thing, so. That, that's going on now. I think, I believe that mix is coming out of Dubuque and then when that, one, once that's done, then we do our, our normal surface and then. Or excuse me, basin and surface mix, so thirty, I believe it's thirty working days on the job, so it'll, it'll suck along pretty quick.
Yeah, they, they completed that first layer. Did all the way to Lamont and they come all the way back the next day and. I know it was late one on Friday night for them, but.
And, and so that's only an inch, so it goes by fast. I mean, one truck moves down the road a long ways. They're using the full voice, so it, it. It goes right down the road and they'll use a pickup machine when they start doing their regular surface mix, which is ideal because I, I think that gives the best product, so.
Okay. Any, anything news on sixty-two? You don't know how that's progressing, how that, when that estimated time that's gonna be completed or anything?
No, I, I mean.
Yeah.
I could reach out to DOT, but they don't, they don't supply the.
Still was amazed. I had to go by, turn around, go back to the cars again, just to watch that thing work, you know, it's digging up. Turn it over to the top and laying it back down with a. Tanker truck mixing it and.
Holding place for site.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
I've never seen it done.
We do it all the time.
Really? In Clinton or here?
In Clinton.
I've never seen it done, I.
Do you guys have a lot of PCC here, more than H and A, but? So we did get a, not a complaint, but somebody had emailed the office here about, hey, something about. You know, the surface is rough and we deserve better for our taxes kind of thing and. And we put them in, in touch with the DOT rep, but really what they're. They're, they're thinking that the cold and place map was the finished part, so it'll get overly, but.
It's rough.
Yeah.
But it looks, I mean, you still got these big deep tire tracks sometimes where the truck sat there for an hour or something. I don't know, but you get a few of them.
If you really want to see some interstate, so if you ever park alongside there, right after they do it, go out on the edge of the pavement, edge of it and push, you can push it in with your fingertips.
What, you mean that material?
Don't suggest people do that.
What?
You mean, you mean the material itself?
Yeah, so outward on the edge where you don't get the lateral of support from like, say, the center part of the lane, it's, it's pretty spongy. That's why I. Get very angry when I see truck drivers hauling mix, running their outside tenths on the very edge of the pavement because it'll, they'll fail it real quick, so.
No, I was just interested in the makeup.
There's probably fire trucks out there. There was plenty of writing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not your room.
Yeah. Yep, no, good. Thanks, Todd. At this time, we're at the visitors and citizen section. Are there any citizens or comments from the public that would like to address the board? Robert, are you here for a different issue or are you?
He's there. He's on the agenda.
Oh, well, I should, I should look further than, shouldn't I? Is Kelly Hood a show?
She is not.
Okay, well then we'll invite. Mister Robert Abbott, I believe, who's doing that, right? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Nice to either see or meet you guys. I am the founder and CEO of Innovate One Twenty, just across parking lot there, which is the. Renovation and re-lawn of what, I'll, I'll always refer to it as a Jackson State. Into a coworking center and an innovation hub for the county to help drive entrepreneurship. And opportunity here. So I am here, Kelly sends her apologies. She had another meeting that she. Could not get out of, so I'm here instead. We have two events that I wanted to make you guys aware of. First is tomorrow, June seventh, at River Ridge Brewing at four o'clock. The program is called Wednesdays Are Possible. Kind of a. One name about a program we run to really expose entrepreneurship and opportunity in the county. Part of our goal with Innovate One Twenty is to really drive an entre- entrepreneurial ecosystem. But we got, we have work to do before we can get to that point, and I think. Part of our first step is. To really highlight a lot of the successes that already exist in this county, and there are a lot of. Many of which we, we don't even, we haven't even heard of before. Tomorrow is Jacinda Smith, who owns a company called Time. I don't know if you guys know her or have heard of her. Probably close to a ten million dollar business that we've never heard of running out of Bellevue. That's pretty impressive. Great story. So our, our Wednesdays. Are possible events start at four o'clock. This, tomorrow is in Bellevue. Following that, they will be in our newly renovated headquarters here. Four o'clock, the first Wednesday of every month. So I invite you guys, if you're available, to join those events. They're usually. Pretty insightful. You, you learn about a lot of things happening in this county that you may not have otherwise known.
I was able to attend the last one in Preston with the Plaxton, very interesting. I mean, I knew the family of kids growing up, but. What they went to and how they come about it, you know, some a little luck, some a little this, a lot of hard work, you know? And I don't know Jacinda since she's been back in town. I know her parents, of course, too, but. Yeah, interesting stuff. You know, just to think it's in a small building and trying to make orders meet and, yeah.
Well, I, I, I think a lot of people. We all have ideas and turning those ideas into action are two sometimes very different and very. Different from a difficulty standpoint, opportunity, but the more you know, the more you understand, the more you see someone else's journey who's done it. I think the more it can bring confidence to folks here, and it's also just another way. I think to celebrate the great things that happen here and to bring people together. So I, Mike, I wasn't at the last one, but we had about forty-five people.
Oh, I'd say at least.
Yeah, and that was our third event.
Yeah, there was.
So we're, we, first one was forty-some, second one was forty-some, so we're, we're getting pretty good attendance for something that had just started. I will invite you also to next. The July event. First Wednesday of July, whatever that is, that's the fifth, I believe. Our guest is Booster House. The kind of the ultimate OG of entrepreneurs, so. We'll, we'll be interviewing him. So that's Wednesdays Are Possible. The following week, we are having our grand opening of Innovate One Twenty, so we're unveiling the building. Supply chain issues notwithstanding. We are unveiling the building in two public events. The first. Which you guys are, are, well, you're invited to attend both of them, but I think the first one may be specifically interesting. Eleven o'clock on June fifteenth, we are having a ribbon cutting ceremony. Includes a number of folks from around town, Debbie Durham, who's the director of Economic Development. Will be with us to help us with that process and to give a few remarks. If you guys haven't seen, Howard, the building has developed. I'm really excited to show it to you. It's, it's a, it's a new level. For what our county can offer and what, how we can bring people here. Our first corporate event. Is with John Deere. They're bringing people from Moline and Dubuque in, into this facility because it's at a level that is beyond what they have at their facility. So. More to come there. So that's the eleven o'clock event on the fifteenth. At four o'clock, we're having a public open house. Really just an opportunity for the public to come in and see what's done. That's all my business today. Appreciate it.
We appreciate the invites and, yeah, the interesting stuff. And I knew, you know, I was able to. Go through the building when you started and I went through some of the programs that you started with the school kids, high school kids and both of them programs, interesting, you know, I mean. Again, when you, when you work with. Concrete or wood or something like that your whole life, you don't realize what, what's out there and how it all works when you. You know, invent something, if you will, or entrepreneurship, as you call it, and. Yeah, it's interesting stuff.
Thank you. Well, we, on the nineteenth of June, we start our third cohort for user experience design internship for Jackson County High School kids. We've expanded it this year. We have five clients who the kids are interacting with directly. One is Google. So we have kids in the county who are interfacing directly with senior leaders at Google in Boulder, Colorado. We just added John Deere this year. We're very excited about that, so we're working with UX designers out of Moline. We have Scott from Grow. GAF, you know, building materials, they're large manufacturing, I think, they're on board. And Global Telemedicine Company, so it's pretty exciting opportunities for our kids. To engage, it pushes them, and you guys are all, I'll, I'll send invites. For you guys to come through and tour. I think last year, you, you heard the kids give their pitch, right? And that's good practice for them to. Communicate what they're working on to people they haven't seen before, put some under pressure and makes them better. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Yeah, good luck.
Appreciate it.
Excellent.
Um. Lisa? Or Todd, are you back for a reason or?
Well, I said, I want to check with the.
Laurie?
Laurie, real quick, and she said that sometimes you get a package of information about hog confinements, but they, they have to submit something to you?
They have to submit, yeah, a mineral management plan. So they haven't submitted a mineral management plan, but I am aware that they are building a. A mineral facility or a hog confinement facility. And they had not submitted any of the, what they call an MMP or the Mineral Management Plan.
Okay, and Lori doesn't have site plan stuff in either, so. I'm just trying to figure out, I, I'll contact the owner directly and try and get that because. I don't think anybody here in the county has like where the building's gonna go and stuff yet, so. Because it's, Lori was saying it's not big enough to warrant the. Big, where you have to go through the matrix, it's, it's.
Yeah, not very well could be, but I get, again. We don't know where the building's gonna go related to the driveway, you know, again, that's kind of a concern of us, I guess. So you don't. I mean, I don't, we mind awarding the driveway.
Poller still has to go through here, right? When they give us the mineral management plan, yes.
Oh, will that have a plan with it or?
It will not.
So, yeah, so it doesn't do, so even the mineral management plan doesn't do as much good so far. I guess when we, when they submit in a permit app for a class C or B, we need a site plan with it, I'm gonna guess.
I, I would. I would like, I think that's legitimate that we know what's going on, you know, I don't know. I mean, if they're infringing on a right of way or something, or, you know, we, we need to know it before.
Yeah, well, they, they would build, build in the right way, but. So I guess we'll, I'll ask this.
No, there's some setbacks, I should say.
Yeah, the permitting for the bad information, but I think probably something we need to make a change in our policy and the permit too, that you're. Asking for a class C or B, you need to submit a. Site plan with your request, so we know where, whatever your building is gonna go, basically.
I think that's legit.
All right.
Thanks, Todd.
Problem solved.
All right, so Lisa will step back. Sorry about that. And so we have Lori Ruth here from zoning. And for our department update.
We went to Alicia Lake last Friday.
Road tripping.
Road tripping with, with just water. Friday. On a Friday. We were here all day. We didn't, we didn't leave early, I promise. Oh, my goodness, you guys, you should see the improvement in Alicia Lake with the nuisance violations. Huge, big changes. You can go ahead and read them.
So we sent, I did the spreadsheet today. We sent forty-two notices out. Eighteen are done. They're completely finished with what we sent them out for, and then we noted. On the, on the short end, counting them up, I noted that fourteen have made significant progress in their properties.
Seventeen, fourteen. There's thirty-one.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So thirty-two.
Fourteen.
Eighteen, that sounds like, I thought seventeen.
It's all good. But anyway, yeah, we were, we were pretty pleased to see.
Well, that's good to hear, you know, I.
Are, are some of these asking for extensions, part of the thirty-two?
Yes, those are some of the, see, part of the thirty-two. Part of the ones that are still left, part of the. Ten. Those that are stolen. And then to, like, the Bennett property, she has more than, you know, more than one. Property that would have received notice. So do we want to start it with Hartman on our list here?
Well, I keep forgetting names and I don't know where we're at. You'll have to refresh me a little bit of.
Table that one.
Okay.
That was.
Hartman was the one where he had.
The building, building material, you, be the one you called and talked to.
I called and talked to him.
Okay, you called it though.
That was Vera, man, I was trying to.
Okay, so you're, we're on the right page. Is Hartman, you called and talked to him?
Yes.
And I've talked to him also, we went out and yes, there has been improvement on his site. And that's what he said. He, his, my conversation with him was, most of the stuff that's on pallets. Is papers for his project across the road. You know, he said, I asked him what he's thinking for kind of a completion date. Type of deal. He said six to eight weeks he should be done. I told him that we really haven't been granting extensions that long. That, you know. But. You know, if an extension was granted. Even if it wasn't a hundred percent completed, one, he would have to come back in and ask. For another one, but it would only be granted if we're seeing improvements, so.
Significant.
Yes, and that's what I said, and I said.
And I can understand.
Some of the stuff that you got setting around, if you, you know, still have it setting around, if it can be orderly and.
Yeah.
Stuff like that are the big thing, you know, the big things, so.
Yeah, cause like the trailer and the camera in the background, I don't think that's his property.
No, that's not his, that is not his.
So just a general question as it's brought up because of this, this guy is using this as a staging area for his constructed property across the way.
Well, right now, the drive, the paving of the driveway wouldn't, would not need that. But yes, he had a building permit for the renovation he was doing on his house. However, um. It's probably expired and I'm not convinced that the project's done, but from the exterior, it looks done. So if there's still, I'm gonna picky things going on inside, we're not too concerned.
Well, as we go through these, uh, after last week's conversation, I drove by and looked at the properties that we had in Moline for. I've been thinking about these extensions during the thirty days and stuff. And I thought about when you guys need to check on it and that's increasing the workload on you. I feel it is not above. Asking them, when they say, I need an extension. In an email. I would like a plan of attack. There were listed violations on the notice sent. I would like them to say, these are the violations I had, this is how I attend or. I need an extension, okay, cause I will remove these by this day, give me a little bit more of a plan than just, hey, I need an extension.
Okay.
Because that is a very generic describe that. You gave them a semi-specific, not completely thorough, because under you can't list every single violation which you stated. But of the violations listed, you know, unregistered vehicles, abandoned this or whatever, these are your violations. What is your plan of attack, don't just an extension, um. Well, I moved it. Well, that doesn't constitute cleaning up, you know, so. I would like them to provide a little bit more of a plan of attack than, I need an extension, because. That helps them identify what they're actually doing, recognizes and affirms what you told them. And it kind of puts them on notice exactly what, you know, you know what I mean? And to me, that makes it easier to uh approve an extension. Because right now, every one of these just, I I can't, my, well, one of them, my trailer burnt down in two thousand fourteen. And I haven't been able to clean it up. That's the best ten years, you know.
So let's.
I'm being very generic right now, cause I don't tear each individual. If you're asking for an extension, identify what.
Okay.
Is it listed in the violation? And give me a timeline where we can see benchmarks, where you say if you're gonna have the vehicles registered, moved. Or cleaned up by X state and you don't, well, that's easily verifiable, and then no, you're not getting an extension.
Absolutely.
And these extensions need to come in in a timely manner, I mean, not. You know, June first has come and gone and we're.
Still getting.
These were, these were obtained before that date.
Okay, so, let's address the Hartman one, because in our original letter that you sent out for nuisance. We did not have the specifications that say if you're gonna ask for extension. Now, if we're gonna do that, then you go back to him, you ask for these requirements that say. If if then, if you're gonna ask for an extension, where we're gonna require some more information from you.
Okay.
So as far as the Hartman property goes. I don't have an issue with giving him an extension, like I said, if I see constant improvement again. I'm not gonna give him two months if if I don't see any improvement in a month, so he wants to come back, yeah.
And that's kind of what I told him, I said, I doubt very highly you would get anything more than a month, okay?
So I would make a motion, we approve a one month extension for Hartman. With him identifying the violation to give us benchmarks of when they will be rectified. If we can track that and things are moving in the right direction, you can see pallets are disappearing, the papers are going in the driveway, all that kind of stuff. And as he goes, he's cleaning it up, we can look at another extension.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you doing the extension thirty days from the original notice or thirty days from today's date?
So I, so he had put his. Request in in time, and we didn't act on it.
I would say from today's date, cause that would give him the holiday weekend of July.
Okay, so you're not uniform in that though, then, in 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 what you did with the other one, so I guess, yeah, if we're treating each one separately, I'm fine with that. I mean, not that we have to be uniformed, you know, we give them thirty days on the.
So I just wanted to know.
Doesn't matter to me, I. I, you know, again, if I see improvement in twenty.
Well, if we do thirty days from the first, we're always gonna be looking at it the Monday, first Monday of July.
Yeah, and then two, at the same time, that's one of those he'd have to ask for an extension, and then we'd go out and review and. Yeah, we don't get out there like every day or even once a week.
So, okay, from the first.
Okay.
Thirty day extension from the first, but they have to identify benchmarks of the violations so we can better track. And I think that would aid you guys and us, as we see, these are the violations. Um, and these are how it's progressing.
Yes.
I'll second that.
A motion on second to, you have a thirty day extension or to June thirtieth? That'll be thirty days from the first, is that correct? Um, was was he? Was the motion, do I have, all the favors, yeah.
Bye.
And I oppose name.
Okay, the next one we have is Beerman. That was the property on E seventeen, that's just to the east of Island, uh, excuse me, Meyer Hill.
So I visited the property, uh, I think maybe we all have, I don't know, my personal thoughts are, there's many items there, several items there that are. Either ag related or farm related, I don't have an issue with, like the trailers, the stock trailers. Um, the railroad ties, I don't have a problem with, maybe the topper can be moved and organized. I I I understand the issue that you're looking at right now, which is, which is the miscellaneous items in front of the property and and the overgrowth. Um, and uh, so that, I think it could be addressed. I have tried to contact him, I did have the opportunity to speak to his mother, which was. I assume she's elderly and. Limited, so, um, I have not yet been able to contact him, but I did talk. To a brother-in-law. And I would still like to have him friend to contact him and see what his plan is with the property. If there is one, um, if there's no. Acceptance on his part to think that there's something wrong, then we, I guess we go in a different direction, but I I I still have not been able to physically talk to him, so.
So would you like to table this this time, that's you guys' thoughts?
Whatever we did the last time, we postponed it. We didn't take any action.
Okay, so postpone until next week?
Oh.
Or.
Yeah, I'm open for content here.
I'm looking at it, I have no problem with the ag machinery and things like that, but the place is mowed. That means he has somebody coming there to service and take care of the yard. Um, I drove by and I looked at it, so if somebody's mowing the yard, that tells me somebody's there relatively frequently. Um, I talked to some neighbors, they say they don't see people there a lot, but tractors move, trailers move, things like that, so that tells me there's activity at the house. If we have an address, I think we sent him a thirty day extension. And to me, I'm more of the refuse, the 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 foliage and stuff around the house, the bit of the garbage around the house. I completely agree with all the ag-related products, the the tire, you know, the the railroad ties, things like that, but. Just looking at the house, the overgrowth, the vegetation, things like that, to me, you already got somebody there mowing. Having cleanup around the house, and I consider the problem good, I mean, I mean.
So we don't need an extension, cause we haven't filed anything.
No, we haven't filed anything, I can't do a nuisance abatement without your permission.
Okay.
So.
I would issue a nuisance, okay, I would issue a nuisance abatement saying, clean up the refuse around the house and clean up the vegetation. Other than that, I mean, it's a lot of ag-related stuff in, in the grand scheme of.
Kind of this, I'm not for sure what that. Sitting in the background right there, where people are.
Almost looks like a refrigerator.
You know, obviously that needs to have doors off, if not, or a pot machine, maybe.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I believe that, that Monte Carlo up front is probably abandoned. So I probably wouldn't.
Needs fixed up is what it means.
Yeah.
And if that, if that is his intent sometime down the road, then yeah, it needs to just kind of be maybe.
Organized this.
Yeah, I literally, one or two good days there around the house cleaning up the vegetation and a little bit of stuff, but. I don't really see a problem.
So are are you saying we should send the letter, or you go, or should we give a chance yet to try to make contact and see what's what's your thoughts are, you know, this is.
You tried to make contact, you got a number, did he call you back?
There was no recording, all it did was ringing and calling, so there was no recording to be. And I'll be honest with you, I call, I had talked to his mother twice and she was unable to give me. The second time is she give me a different number, that number is not accessible, so again, I. This morning, I I was able to contact somebody who knows him.
So.
I'm good with whatever you guys decide, of course.
I'd say we issued a nuisance basement, clean up around the house, the refuse, the 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 foliage. And like I say, he has somebody there mowing, so it isn't like you'd be asking to put more than that, the agricultural products, the stacking of that. You know, the arrangement of machinery, I have no problem with that, just. Around the the immediate house seems to be the biggest issue.
And and maybe I'm, he abandoned unregistered. Vehicles. Yeah, whatever you guys decide, um, but but remember, we might be back here in thirty days. We're discussing whether we got a, um, you know, a request for an extension or if we're gonna. Go forward with the coordination.
I would say this is small enough, there shouldn't be an extension, I mean. Like you say, a good day cleaning up there would make a world of difference.
Right.
And Mike, you have a history with this property in the system. Oh, cause it's been on, it's been, um. On nuisance list before.
Oh, yeah, a couple of years ago we did, and it was, you know, again, it was improved to the point where that we were content with it.
I make a motion, we should abate it for the, the items and stuff around the house, the the overgrowth.
Okay, motion on second to send a payment notice, uh, that presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Oppose, nobody opposed, correct? Motion carried.
Okay, the next one is the handwritten letter that we received from Sherry Stewart for her property on Pleasant Drive. My understanding was that things were cleaned up after the fire. And and I have found some history to where this has been. There have been complaints on this property in the past. There, I think she understands that things are being handled differently now than maybe they were in the past and that. We are gonna stand behind our guns and. Should we have to take additional action, we will. I do understand there's probably some financial hardship on her part and mobility limitations. Transportation issues, and she has not been on this property since. The the fire.
So she mentions a son in her letter, I believe, and we had, we have no idea or contact, uh, when anything like that to see if he's.
He's in the Illinois area. I forget what she told me which town, but he's the one that sent her the trap phone around Walmart in.
So you've never been really able to speak to her either.
Oh, I've spoken.
You spoke with her. And as her intentions is to retain the property? Um, and you've spoken to her through this phone number that's on this, or how?
Yes, I call, that's the actually the hotel where she lives. So they they transferred the call up to her room.
So what is your recommendation?
My recommendation would to give the, grant her the thirty day extension.
I mean, I can sympathize with her financial issue and and her uh medical condition, if it will, um. But again, it's been nine years since she's been there. So, uh, either we move on or clean it up.
Yeah.
Um, it's as simple as that, I, again, I don't mind the thirty days, but I, you know, at this point. I mean, if we abate, it's gonna be on the tax sale, one way or the other, or something.
And I can explain that to her if she did not make that thirty days.
She got the notice when?
Uh, I'd have to look, it was actually served by Dubuque County Sheriff's Department, and I think it was a timely serve.
So the beginning of May.
Yes, sir.
And there's been literally nothing moved on that property.
That is correct, although she has reached out and.
At the last minute.
Yeah, she was last week, um.
And she's asking for a thirty day extension so she can activate her phone and come up with the money to clean it up.
So is she willing to um disclose her son's phone number, that maybe you could feel? Out what might happen here?
I could talk to her, I could ask her about that, I know she has been in contact with board members at Leesher Lake. Asking if they had anybody.
Locally.
That that could go in there and clean it up and, you know, see if she could do it for seventy five dollars. Um, I know there's a lot of weight there, so. That might cover the weight, um, but yeah, there's some weight there. But yeah, but she's. I think she has good intent and, you know, if we, if she understands the implications that we will be. Won't be handling this like has been handling the past.
Well, obviously, she has limited resources by the.
Absolutely.
So. I guess it's up to the board, how they feel about it.
I'm a little bit wary with not seeing any action at all.
We have not seen any action at all.
And I guess, but on the other side of that, if it's been nine years and we don't see any action in the next thirty days, we can still take action. We've waited nine years, so.
I just, I just don't wanna see this get into every thirty days, we're getting another, another notice.
No, we definitely put a, put a stop to that kind of stuff, that's what it comes to.
You know, so.
So you're gonna have to have some kind of spreadsheet to say yes and they. I mean, I've got a file, you know, that, but if I get one every, you know, if I get one every time, then I make my notes on it.
I I guess I'll go back to the same thing, I understand her age or 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 limitations of uh mobility. Finance, I'm not really, if you can maintain your membership there, you know.
And here's, there's another question, I'll just leave it as a question, is she?
I don't know. So, I would give her understanding full well that. I want the same benchmarks, I wanna see progress, I wanna know timelines. I wanna contacts, none of this, just blanket, I need an extension with no site. I want, there has to be details in what she's trying to do, who she's contacting, what kind of timelines, and if there is absolutely no. Improvement on this in thirty days, there will be none more granted.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay, you change your motions, are you, are you doing thirty days from the first?
Yes.
Okay.
So June thirtieth?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Have motion second to extend the extension nuisance suspension as presented, uh, with conditions. All those in favor, say aye, and I oppose name, motion carried. Could you check Lori too in the processes, if this is one, or the guest does not have a chopper pump or is behind on that?
Yeah, checked, and yes, there is a grinder pump, and seeing right now it's current.
Okay.
Good. I I talked to Shelley last Friday, thank you for that. It's like, I'm starting to anticipate you guys a little bit, okay?
I mean, well, one thing leads to another, you know, you add two, two that came up forward, don't they, I I don't.
Yeah, I'm starting to anticipate. Yeah, okay, so the next one's Leah Bennett, and, um. She made a request by email, she has more than one property in her name, and. There, there has been progress on. Let's see, which one, she was the one.
Two, six, oh, eight has had progress, right? Is that one? Two, six, we can look at.
Okay, there's, there's old.
Okay, yes, there have been changes, they're working.
Okay, so back that up, would you borrow into last picture?
This is six, six, zero, eight.
Okay, so this is current. Is this current status here?
Um, go down, let's see. This is current, the the first two are the older pictures, this is the, these are the newer pictures.
Go back down. So. It looks some type of. It looks some type of construction there, but it looks like it may have ceased?
Well, actually, there is an amendment. They're they're taking it down and that one might need.
Kind of just not really taking care of what they were necessarily taking down.
The the building, yeah, is definitely seeing better days, you know, it kind of looks like maybe the original construction was not. Of par and so now they're having to go back in and. And make changes, so I have a feeling that this could be even. Take more time, but as long as they're actively working on it.
So does the association have any, have you talked to the association and say, this is what's going on here, we filed these and we suggest that. When you have a board meeting that you contact some of your residents and say, hey. Pick up the pace here where this is gonna happen, so.
They they have had, matter of fact, there was a general meeting, um, when was it, the first weekend in, can help me, was it the first Sunday in May?
I have no idea.
Okay, I didn't know if you were part of.
I haven't, I actually yesterday was the first time I've been up there in years.
Oh, no, okay, so they did have a general membership meeting on, I believe it was the first Sunday in May. When they um, that was part of their dues, um, or they wanted to increase their dues, which did pass. Um, not that we're concerned about that, but anyway, um. There was talk about the abatements. From my understanding from their board secretary and a few of the other members, we. We get good phone calls from from there, we've gotten, just so you know, you guys are getting kudos.
But here's what I'm saying.
They don't have one scheduled from what I've been told.
I've been to a meeting and, you know, several times and. Basically, I told them also, you know, i- if they would have a crew that could simply. Helping some of these smaller situations, if somebody's got a dump trailer that they would. You know, have a cleanup day or have a cleanup week or whatever.
Then I I've talked to him about that and matter of fact, we even talked to another guy when we were out there last uh Friday. And he's like, do you know anybody that needs help, it's like, yes, I do.
Yeah.
And throw, you know, through.
If you hit some volunteers, I mean, that's what it's about, I mean, they are, they are their community.
So I did, you know, throw out Sherry's, Sherry's name, cause she was asking me, you know, do you know anyone that can help? So that's also why I, when I was out there, we mentioned it to a. A guy, he actually, this one that calls every three or four weeks to see where our progress is on. Leisure Lake, that was before we got the notices out, so how close, how close? It's like, well, we're getting closer, but anyway, um, so yes, we have talked to Leisure Lake about. How too, this is their responsibility and how. After this is all taken care of, they need to be on it.
Absolutely.
So.
I mean, they need to be willing to help themselves, it's their community.
Yeah, and one of the concerns they had is they don't. They don't have the teeth that we do, cause we can act, for enforcement, yeah, we can actually. Go on the property and get those violations removed, whereas they can't. Is my understanding, so if there's abandoned vehicles, they can issue fines or do whatever they. Can administratively, but as far as. Getting it physically removed, they don't have, that is part of what they can do.
Okay, so we're talking about Leah Bennett right now, correct?
Yeah.
You have an idea how many properties she has? From what I'm understanding, I don't think she lives in the state.
Um, she's in the state, uh, forget what town she was in, we had that served out a county. And I don't remember where where that was, she does have family members here that she co-owns. This property with.
A lot of property.
Yeah, I think so, and they might have more property, but I think her name might only be on two of them, I believe. So, do you think that's right?
I think that's correct.
Okay, so anyway, um, didn't receive any extensions on. The other people with the same last name, but anyway.
So were these two properties, uh, recommendation?
I'd say thirty days, yes.
With the benchmarks and a plan.
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep it uniform.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Motion second to approve a thirty day extension for abatement or nuisance violation, all those favorites say aye.
Right.
I oppose name, motion carry.
Uh, one thing we might consider doing. Um, so initially, so if I know that they're making this appeal. And say if they send it to Mullen first and she's really good about forwarding me the emails, I would then request. You know, the information about the benchmarks, kind of action, that's right. Uh, because it's not written in our ordinance that that's required for them to make an appeal. So we can ask for it after the fact.
Yep.
But, um. Going forward.
Good with that.
So.
Give it a lot better chance of getting through an extension.
Okay.
If you know, kind of, and that's everybody gives us familiar with what they're doing, puts them on the clocks.
And and the big thing is approving, but I don't wanna see a little bit of, little bit of things moved and then everything ceases again, you know, let's, let's keep moving forward.
Yeah, you're gonna have to. I mean, by these extension times. I really wanna see things almost, almost done, like, hey, I need another week maybe, type of thing, or. My truck is coming next Wednesday, all this stuff out.
Yeah, and one fellow we talked to, he's neatened it up and, you know, gotten rid of some.
Organized.
It's organized, dump. Yeah, but he's, he's working on getting a a big dumpster.
So again, if you can get a hold of the association and say, hey, you guys need to have your input, if you're willing, you're willing to have volunteers in the community, let's, let's hear it, let's get a list and let's do something.
Okay, yeah, and then I can help.
Maybe they need to relook at their homeowners association rules because. One of the biggest dreaded things that I've heard about living in any town is a homeowners association and they're authoritative to dictate what you can and cannot do on your property. And I don't view the Leisure Lake Association as being any different than a homeowners association, and why can one have teeth and the other can't? And so.
Yeah, and I think some of it's just, it was allowed to get out of hand and it it exploded.
Oh, no, and and, you know. We can bring some of that back to us, maybe, I I don't know, but we can, or pass, last. Whatever, whatever been done is gone underwater and we're moving forward.
Wait, that we are, one thing I wanted to make you guys aware of, there are a couple notices out there that could not get served. Um, have no address, no, nothing good on, on. On the people, it's like, so.
So no grinder pumps, no iris information, they won't have any information either.
I tried, I didn't go that route, but as far as the the resources that the sheriff's offices uh that were involved had. They didn't.
They got grinder stations, see if iris.
Iris or and or even the treasure.
Has any information on it.
There's gotta be taxes, either delinquent or paid, or somebody's gotta be have a name or a contact somewhere, address. All right, appreciate it.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, have a good day.
Sure, see us next Tuesday.
Updates, yeah.
Maybe not.
All right. Lisa, would you like to let John proceed? Sure, John, if you'd like to come forward, give us an update if you would. Mr. John Hanson, uh, president of Midwest Construction Consultants, of course, he's working on a couple of projects here at town.
Yes, sir.
Got a box from Amazon, must be legit.
Little bit, I got a little bit of everything you asked for, having an update on. Oh, yeah, some point eight, we've started some of that here for a little bit too. Uh, as far as current project status, they have recast, the erection is complete finally. Uh, steel and bar joists are about ninety seven percent complete and they're welding up, bridging and such. Uh. Decking needs to be completed by next week, I mean, we need to get some roofing on this building, so. Uh, we're pushing them to get that done, pushing contractors to get that done.
Uh, the. Is there a likelihood that'll get done? Where is it at percentage wise of being complete or?
The rough, the the decking. I'd say they're ninety seven percent, they've been having trouble and I've issued letters to Bruce Builders and such in regards to that of increasing. Their manpower, they've been on site, you know, eight weeks now and, you know, hit and miss here and there, so we're. We're, uh, we've issued some letters to Bruce Builders, see if they can push that forward or get someone in there to get more manpower in there. I would anticipate, uh, right now, they have all the bar joists set and such, they have some bridging to go on the west, uh, uh, the. East side of the admin area. And, uh, they're welding the uh equipment frames up on the correctional area right now. And, uh, I would anticipate by the end of next week, decking should be all but complete. Uh, we need, I'm having a meeting today, cause I'm thinking, you know. I gotta get the other prime contractors going, you know, you know, their labor rates have gone up, so we're trying to make the work. As efficient as possible for them. So, uh, right now, the administrative floor slab is completely done, all the underground electric and all the ground plumbing. Been camera done at this point in time. And, uh, so we'd like to get the framers in there. And, uh, get that, so I'd like to get the roof down that section first. So that I can get East Lord Brothers in there to start doing their HVAC duct with. And I talked to them to see if they wanted it open first, you know, without the framework. And they felt with the VRF systems that. And, uh, rooms identified because you got a uh P-Tech unit in the middle of each room. That it it wouldn't be an issue, and we've worked with them before. So they're they're prepared to go and have the corrupt curves in the weather. Uh, so to answer your question, I feel that. Try again, pick up the labor and move it up more, but I I feel that. Even with the labor they got, they want three steelworkers on site, they. They should be able to complete the deck by the end of next week, that's why I'm pushing. Uh. So the admin floor slabs are totally done, the correctional floor slabs are about. Oh, thirty to forty percent complete. The underground electrical, uh, I'm real pleased with Rock River, I think that the, they're gonna. Be complete by the end of this week for the underground electrical, it's needed for the correctional area. And. We can get that board out. So what the schedule currently is, the Masons are supposed to start next week. So they can start getting the masonry blocks set, so they can start forming up the mezzanines to get those poured. I wanna push to see if we can get the framer, he was wanting to go with Allied. Which is Bruce Builders subcontractor, I wanna see if he can get started in there. Next week and start framing up some, cause it'll open up additional work for the plumber and electrician to rough in. So that they're not sending crew to do one thing. Roof blocking, I sent a letter to, uh, Bruce Builders, they're supposed to have people there this week to get the roof blocking on. On the parapet section so that when a roofer comes in, it's ready to go. Uh. And I wanna get the rough curves and that, I want that started no later than, uh, last week of June. So all the materials are, I think. The steel is just slowing the situation down, so.
Well, hopefully we just keep moving along here, I know it's probably hair pulling time, but you know.
Well, I I'm real pleased with their, uh.
We're good.
Flatwork subcontractor, you know, AVs coming in and they're going for another large section tomorrow, tomorrow. Uh, plumbers, uh, plumber have been in there and they're getting all their floor drains set and such, so.
So I, you know, I purposely stayed away from the joint, but I mean, if a guy wants to look around, are we capable of walking in there without giving?
Yes.
Attack?
Yeah, no, if you wanna come down after the meeting, that'd be great, you guys wanna take a walk through. See where we're at.
So the grand scheme of your, uh, schedule and your completion date, are we staying on target?
I have not changed that, I have not received any requests for extension, we're gonna have to crew up and. You know, and I thought, you know, the thing is, Bruce Builders has to drive. The process right now, cause they're in the general construction of other primes, you know. I can't be scheduling them and then calling them back and changing the schedule. You know, I'm trying to coordinate them so that they have time and I can't call them up two days and it. Hey, come next week, I gotta give them a couple of weeks' notice, so. Uh, what I'm trying to do is get them to commit to their schedule and then work their schedule, make sure that they meet those commitment dates. Cause they haven't here recently, so. But, uh, yeah. But I'm happy with the progress of electrical.
Well, the the rain sure ain't bothering them, so that shouldn't hinder many, so.
Well, I wanna get that crane out of there so we can start grading on that.
Sure.
Side too.
Yeah.
And if you're out there, I would like to be with you a little bit about that, I mean. Can't catch twenty two between Alex and, you know, uh, Steve Clocky and, you know. So, I basically, I need a expedite that I can call and say that I've worked with, or is it? Just graded, you know, you can make all the plans in the world, but, uh.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, uh, let's go on to. Did you wanna go to pay at first or just general, how we got, you had questioned how, how we got from. Point A to point B, there before. As far as financial.
Oh, I mean, I see the claims come through, but I I mean, I don't know how we.
Where are we at in the project percentage, fifty percent, twenty five?
Say we're thirty.
Thirty percent of the project, where are we at in our budget wise?
Uh, let me just say, forty eight percent of the project.
We're at forty eight percent of the project is complete, or we have, and where are we at financially? With the bids and everything, are we?
Uh, right now, I'm at a negative nine thousand eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and thirty three cents.
Means you're over your, I guess, have we spent about forty eight percent of the money?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or are we over, where are we?
We're over, yeah.
How much, that's what I'm asking.
Well, we're supposed to put the two hundred and sixty two in, two hundred and sixty thousand in. And that grant.
Yeah.
Not come through to the building. Is, uh, I guess. Just briefly, I.
That you're talking to, uh. Ashley Gibson, Grady O C, the.
So the grant has been, the grant has been, we have been awarded the grant to two hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
But it is not to be used for any of the construction costs, it only is for equipment.
Right.
Basically, just roughly, and I didn't, I I, this is what we went over originally. So. Idea. Where we're at, really, we're doing very well as far as controlling some of these costs. Well, basically, there is three different samples that we had. When we were trying to make a decision on whether to move forward or not. And the third one is basically what we had considered going forward with. And, uh. Ben sample three. Basically, uh, we're looking at six point five zero two nine three three. And bonds to be issued originally, that was as of January eleven. Uh. Point point two. So all this was based on six point five, we knew we were definitely over, we were over by about seven hundred thousand. And next was showing a sample, and I had, uh, change orders in there at this time. About two hundred and sixty three thousand, two hundred and eighty seven, that was based on. Identity shelving, what in retaining wall and and that. Actually, the bonding and legal fees came in even higher than are shown here, they came in at a hundred and twenty one. Four eleven, cause the attorneys were a lot higher. But actually, so we're showing under column three, if you go down the bottom, we're showing. If we put the one point six of ARP funds and the six point five million bond money. In there, that we had a contingency of about three hundred and eighty one. In there, that we had a contingency of about three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars at that time. Uh, the board had been told by the legislature that, you know, we would get that grant, we'd be able to use it towards the buildings. But actual bonds issued were six million, six thousand one hundred sixty-four seventy. So it's difference about close to five hundred thousand dollars in what bonds were issued. And the what was estimated as originally behind discounts. Not all discounts were.
And that was gonna be made up with one funds, the half a million dollar difference.
I thought the two hundred and eighty-two, whatever it was, was gonna cover some of that. And then, then we had also looked at the hospital, I mean, we went through all that process at the hospital, and we got some of the furniture and stuff. And we tried to get some of the equipment and stuff, and we had hoped that we would. Be able to. Reduce some of the purchase order costs by using some of that equipment, we're still gonna go down. There's some stored down there, see what we can use for the share. Currently. And I'll just give it, so. That's just kind of where we started at, and how we, you know, when we were trying to determine what we're gonna do. So that'll give you the term payout, cause right now. We are approximately, uh. Nine thousand dollars over budgets, so instead of the. And the debt kind, we're at eight point one six four, right now we're at seven, seven million six hundred and six.
Over cost of the project?
They worked for the half a million dollar reduction from the management.
I took that out, uh. So I don't, I've got a purchase.
Do we have a list of those purchase orders, so we know what they are?
I can put a list together for you, yes.
Is not in here anymore?
Yeah. So if you go to column three on the current cost recap. You're, you're nine thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents over. And that's with this current change order. Twenty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars. That was for. Transformer and, uh. And hooking up the metal building. So, I had contingency, some contingency, but that was eaten up with this. Change order, which we had been anticipating. So that's where, that's current. Where we're at, and if you go down to the percent completed, it kinda gives you an overall. Percent of the project. So I'm gonna order, I'm gonna order first. W, we hadn't welded in the. Transformer and such. So this change order is Black River. When, when we originally looked at transforming, transformer was located up towards the building. Didn't be left there because of distance requirements. And it was gonna be even. Putting it there is gonna be like twenty-eight thousand dollars. Cost for, uh, EMU, uh. It would be MMU, but the transformer in the initial. Primary. So the transformer was moved more out towards telephone pole where you see it now, so that cost went away. Also, when we put the steel building up, there was a cost associated with hooking that building up of. I think Mike correct me when in his range sixteen guys, I understand, but, uh. So we're up around thirty-four thousand, but we're getting some back. So I had Rock River. When I moved the transformer, I cut out the city cost to an extent, and then. We were able to move the tra- and that increased the secondary to the transformer and plus connecting to the building. So I sent on RP and then RFB came back. And that was twenty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the nice thing about connecting it through the building is that it will follow the emergency generator also, so it would be. It would, it would be. Would be powered by the emergency generator. And then, uh, eight hundred and ninety dollars was that not knowing where the precast company is gonna be. That was their labor, their labor to travel and install the conduits that had to be installed in the precast, precast plant. For eight hundred and ninety dollars for total twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. So I guess first, our business would be to. It'd be our recommendation that, you know, we had to reduce it once, so we've been all over it and reviewed it, it seems fair. So it'd be our recommendation that we go ahead and award Rock River. Uh, approved contract number five, change order number one, Rock River. The amount of the twenty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars. Are there any questions in the various domain?
So this is the relocation of the transformer that you said MMU was gonna do for twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, they're gonna, it was gonna be twenty-eight thousand if we left it in the current location up towards the building.
Who decided that location?
That was on engineered drawings, but they said they wanted more distance. From the building.
MMU wanted more distance?
Yeah. And I didn't wanna move it out into the parking lot there, and so. We basically. Got rid of the city cost and transferred it to the electrical.
What was the purpose for MMU wanting to get farther away from the building?
There's, they had a distance requirement, they were concerned when they opened the doors. You had the emergency generator and stuff over there, that they're concerned that. There wasn't enough room between. Buildings and stuff for what they wanted done, so.
So basically, it's a trade-off anyway, so we, we don't have, uh.
Well, I'm just asking, what was the, in the engineering, that you've been, correct? Engineering, designing?
Engineering, the big engineers.
But what was the purpose of putting it close to the building?
It reduced the secondary cost and a lot of utility companies would put the. Wiring in and not have a charge for it. But, uh. Based on, uh, city requirements or MMU, they, they do.
Okay.
Phil, what's the pleasure of the board?
Is there gonna be another change order, cause you talked about. Man, it's getting more expensive. You said. Not many, maybe the costs are getting more expensive, is there gonna be another change order for that?
Uh, no, I just. They're based on, you know, when we, the original. Schedule was changed per then, because we found out the precast been pushed back and we weren't gonna get any bids. Then after bids came in over, we had to postpone and examine how we might have. Even put this together or if we were continuing. So we discussed prior to issuing those contracts with contractors. In pre-construction meeting. That, you know, the schedule would be changed based on the pushback. And the confirmation of then December precast. So we had issued an agenda schedule at that time and. I, I felt that if you're gonna ask for additional labor costs, that would have been time to. I don't have any additional change order that I. Going to, I see some coming, you know, for. You know, storm drainage, you know, I think we're gonna need a little storm drainage. Uh, we didn't, the contractor didn't have to over excavate as much or get some money back, but yet. They're gonna have to go in and do sanitary twice, so they're gonna rent trench box. So we've been controlling costs by. You know. Trying to get rid of what we can, what's, and, and. To get the work done that's necessary.
Well, we certainly hope that we can control, that you can control. Okay, well, that's all we ask.
All I can do is keep. But I think what we ought to do is if you, uh, you know. Is get a list of purchase orders to see what we're gonna prioritize and. You know, so we have some idea where we're gonna be financially.
Right.
That works for you guys.
Need to know.
Yeah.
What to expect.
Yep.
Right now. Moving, is the transfer already moved?
Yes.
Any other questions for John? We will need action on the change order, correct?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second to approve the change order as presented, although in favor, say aye. I oppose nae. Motion carried.
And then I have contract pay application for this month. Construction management fee was five thousand two hundred fifty.
Are they all in the claims?
Yeah.
So, this is part of my motion for today that I'm asking for. Is to approve invoices for fifteen thousand three hundred and eight dollars and seventy-two cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. One hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifteen cents to Bill Bruce Builders. Four hundred and twelve thousand three hundred dollars to your own boat industries. Twenty thousand nine hundred dollars to cross plumbing and heating. Ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to Rock River Electric. A hundred and twenty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty Inc. For a total of six hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-seven cents. Of which two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars was paid from the American Rescue Funds, or ARPA. And authorized the chair signature on the project cost recap for the law enforcement center for the month ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Are them the numbers you have, Mr. Anderson?
There are the numbers right in front of you.
Motion and a second to approve the invoices, approved and invoices as presented. All those in favor, say aye. I oppose nae.
Is that you handed out part of the copies that we have signed you?
Yeah, part of the copies, I just.
I'll give you mine back then, cause I, cause you don't wanna sign it.
Oh.
Right?
Okay, well, yeah, I just need one yellow copy and. And one of those copies for.
You will need to sign this one?
Yes.
So you're having a contractor use your name?
Is there anything in this second packet here, John? Is the two?
Uh, no, just the two, instead of the yellow one and one change order that would get carried there, so.
Is that not the change order there?
Yeah.
Uh, you need one of these signed yellow ones? I wrote on that.
Well, you can sign the white one, I don't care.
Phil, you wanted to join?
Making my notes.
I did wanna bring up, and, and this is just for consideration, is that. Right now, the mezzanines have not been poured. And. So, we had bids on expansion to upper levels. So I just wanted to share those costs with you in case you were considering anything. But when we got the prices for the general population on the upper level. Uh, I use those prices and then add some engineering fees and, uh. About a twenty percent increase and. The cost to finish one of the upper area general expansion areas is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
How many total areas are there?
There's two of them. Available. And, uh, and then the medium and max security areas. Based on the same percentages was in the range of two hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-four. Dollars, which would add six beds per side. So, if you did the two GP areas, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And if you did the two ma- medium max areas, it'd be five hundred and twenty-five thousand in that range. And if you did, that would bring you to about thirty-eight beds. If you did, uh, two GP. If you did two medium max, it'd bring you up to thirty-eight beds. If you did all four areas. It'd bring you up to about fifty total beds, but it's gonna be in the range of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, so. I just putting out those numbers and I can email them to Lisa if you want, I just. I, I don't know if you're considering it, but they're, they haven't placed the walls yet, you know, to close those areas off, so. But, uh, being another quarter as it is, we probably need to look at that first, so. But I, I know that.
Well, I don't know when a decision has to be made, but, uh. Figure out how we're gonna pay for the original.
Well, if you're increasing, and I know there's been discussions on, you know, renting some of the bed space, which currently you're doing. So I think that we probably need to talk to Brent or, and Andrew and see. Where they're at, but that could possibly, if you are. Housing someone's got accounting, pay for some of that, but I just. Run it out there before we got too far along and then, you know. Then all of a sudden bring it up, and we, you know, we wouldn't have an opportunity to react. So I'll get, uh.
I would wanna see where specifics. Spell it out, what you're asking for and how much and all that kinda stuff, because.
For the purchase orders or?
You know, you're kinda throwing out arbitrary round numbers.
It was based on, we got bids.
So that would have to be relet. Or how would you?
No, we'd have to go in and then get them to give us per bid at this point in time, so that's why I put twenty percent on it. So on the bid tabulation forms that we originally got, there's an alternate one to provide. The completion of the upper levels. And of the GP, and then alternate two is complete the medium max areas. So I took those numbers from the original bid. And then put twenty percent or somewhere in it. That's how I came up with the.
So without the two upper level, I was going six and six, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
But that still puts us at thirty-two bed capacity without them, correct?
No, we originally were gonna finish one of the upper GP levels. To get to thirty-two, currently we're at twenty-six beds. But we didn't award that immediately. Based on the cost that came in.
I thought we were at thirty-two beds with, without either one of those upper. Easter, I'm gonna call it east or west additions, right?
Correct.
Original, our original design was thirty-two beds.
We can put additional bunks probably on that lower level if we wish. Because the day room is, is sized. For that addition of. So we can get additional bunks down there, get additional beds. It's just that it could become a little bit crowded.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I guess I don't know where the decision lies, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'd have to go back to the original print, but I, I was. I was assuming we had thirty-two beds without the two additional six on either corner, that's, that, I don't remember any addition for. Medium-max either, I don't remember that.
Yeah, there's twenty-six beds, at least at the lower level expanding to over twenty-four and upper level or a bit, but it ended up being.
I don't, well, I don't know what the original print showed for, I guess, you, you have the original print there?
You talking to me?
Yeah.
I've got the flyer we sent out to the Farm Bureau and, yeah, originally we, uh, the original plan was thirty-two beds below with the two special status cells. Expandable to fifty. I was looking at the blueprint yesterday down at the building site and that's. Um, it's changed somehow between then and now, so. Um, I don't know.
Had to change here, of course, but, yeah.
Well, if there's a flyer sent out to Farm Bureau saying thirty-two beds on the first board. And it's twenty-six, there had to be a change.
I don't think it said thirty-two beds on the first floor, it just said thirty-two beds provision. And that was partly one of their upper levels to be expanded. His plan hasn't changed, I mean, I, I don't change.
So you're saying if we did the whole upper story, it'd be fifty beds?
Yeah. If you do one upper story, then you're up to thirty-two. Of the GP areas, yeah. So I know I talked to Brent about it yesterday and stuff, and I know that, you know, I knew in the flyer we had thirty-two. But I told him basically we're twenty-six. Without that one side being finished on.
Yeah, and I, I got a correct bet, uh, so I'm looking at the flyer, this is a flyer that went out to all the public and everything. Um, it says new thirty-bed facility, uh, it's very small print, so it's hard to read, but I'm trying to. It's hard to tell what's the doubles and what's the singles on here.
Yeah, thirty bed, we talked about putting an extra bunk on the lower level. You know, that's your double bunk kind of lower level. You have the size to dayroom, do you remember, and they, they usually stick twelve because that's an annual size or odd.
Well, my hesitation on developing the upper story right now is the fact that. Part of this is because I've come in halfway through the project, but it seems, it seems like we're in fog and there's a great big unknown on how this is all gonna play out. And where all the finances are gonna settle down. So unless we get a lot of clarity. And a little bit more removal of the fog of where exactly we're sitting and what we can and can't do. I realize the benefit of having the upper, upper levels there, we can run it out, I don't know how much we can run it out. I don't know how much that generates. To know if it offsets the cost of an extra seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um. It would be really hard to approve that.
So what we need to know is what it'll generate, what it could possibly generate.
Well, what we need to know is when we come up another three quarters of a million dollars.
Yeah, yeah, you have to, or, I mean, you do one or two wells, two hundred and forty thousand. You know, twelve more.
Those are just about as hard to come up with, I mean. I know, yeah. We're already, let's accept the building too, you know, if you got one upper level on this, on the east side and not on the west side, then, yeah, I, you know, I. Okay.
It's already there, it's just opening it up, so. But, I was just bringing it up, so.
I guess the next thing I'd like to see from you is that punch list of what was removed, the purchase orders.
Or whatever it was, where it just.
Yeah, you see that were taken out, so we get that half a million dollar decrease, so we can see what those are.
And so we know we're wrapped.
Right.
Financially, yes.
What we need to, you know, what we can mar- marry up with, what it was in storage from the hospital, that kind of stuff, to see. Plug, we got this, we got this, we got this, we can take this from the old jail, see what's left over. Um, and go from there, because again, it all boils down to the fog of. Money and construction and costs and all this kind of stuff. Um, I don't like that. If that's just, and I say it's just been this problem, I don't like not knowing and.
Uh, I don't either, yeah.
So the purchase order thing, that's what I would like to see, so we can start ironing that down to figure out how much we're gonna have to come up with that.
Yeah.
Um, because again, I, I think that's probably a bit of a shock to the system too, um. And that's where we can start kind of clearing the air, so to speak, to figure out where we're sitting. You know, would it be ideal, it's always ideal to finish everything out in construction.
Right.
When everything's there, that's the cheapest you're ever gonna get it. That also should have been decided. Beginning of the project. They try to fit it in now, it's more expensive. And, but it's less expensive than doing it five years from now. But again. Well, understand, don't forget the whole scope had changed dramatically when this COVID thing hit and prices went doubled and.
It is just ridiculous.
It was crazy what happened and, and we had no control, we were still going forward with the project, otherwise you scrapped it. And if, if, well, if it wasn't for that, the, the ARPA funds is really what's keeping it afloat right now.
Yeah.
You know, because that's covering the overages or whatever, and how well this resolves, um, would dictate. And that's a big unknown, so we need to know exactly what we're gonna need to buy after you're done and say.
Yeah, because it doesn't, doesn't do no good to have the building if we don't have the stuff to run the building.
And we're gonna need to know if you need to buy.
That's why we assist you in that aspect, but it's trying to get. You know, I'm trying to get some information as far as what we gotta do on that slope. Uh, trying to get, you know, the design done on that paving and such, so.
Do you remember how much the retaining wall was gonna cost?
Uh, yeah, it was over a hundred and fifty thousand, the reason it wasn't bid with project. Is because people were, uh, all these designers were coming out of woodwork, said you can't build it the way it's. Going in the plans and this and that, and it was just getting ridiculous.
So they caused bill that, why, for structural purposes or?
Yeah, for structural purposes, it's a, it tied backs and this and that, we didn't have any permission. Go back into Spiegel's property at that point in time. So, I mean, we've worked on stuff to try to accomplish and get rid of that retaining wall by grading and such, so.
So that'll be an additional bill, because you're saying it's not in this.
I don't have it in the project cost recap yet, no.
But it's technically part of the, the overall number, the seven, seven point six million dollar number you have here. That hundred and fifty thousand, so this is an, this is another additional bill.
Yeah.
Whatever the grading cost, whatever the grading cost for that hillside is an additional bill to this.
That's why I'm trying to get the engineering and everything done, and it's so I can get a price back to us. To know exactly where we're at, because it should be substantially less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that retaining wall, so.
Well, but I was assuming the retaining wall would then, if it was gonna be required to put the building up, it should be in the project.
It wasn't in bid, so it wasn't put into the project cost.
Good.
Uh, it was in there with the six point five, that two hundred and fifty-three included some of the retaining wall cost in that. Two hundred and fifty-three on that example three issue, but. Finances changed, uh, the board was given, uh. Recommendation by the, uh, the, not accounting journey, bonding attorney, so the six point five was an issue, so. That was five hundred thousand dollars, so. I, I mean, everybody tried to get project done, but. So, you know, we're working with what we had available. When you said.
True.
Uh, yeah, that, okay, yeah. The Jackson County Fair project's coming along very well, penetrate over there. On an excellent way, they have all the confidence, all the people have stuff, uh, confidence rooms, steel and decking is in. Uh, they're looking at completing all the decking here. In the next two weeks. Uh, they're already bringing their ropers in. But I have a change order first for them. And I met with the committee and we went over this with the building committee. Uh, they had to add a disconnect and weatherproof disconnect outside for. Current electrical code requirements, which was an add of eleven thousand dollars. Uh, I deleted the wiring to dishwasher exhaust hood, this is for sticker electric for electric. And I also deleted the dishwasher hood itself, so we should be getting a deduct from another contractor on that. Uh, they want to change some of the light fixtures for our two. And that was an add of one thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Have total add this change order of eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents, there's typically electric for change, contract number four, change order number one. So it's our recommendation for, go ahead and. That change order, are there any questions?
So we don't need wiring to the hood?
No, because I deleted the hood, so I shouldn't get the deep, the, or the.
We don't need the hood?
No, they'd go with a self-vending, uh. Dishwasher, if they go with a dishwasher, I mean, if you're running an episode out. You're not gonna be serving, uh, catering in China, so. Um, basically, they decided that they'd just get a self-vending one.
The addition of a six hundred amp weatherproof disconnect outside for current electrical code. And this, this just sounds like that's something you should, was that, was there additional electric added or what?
Why wasn't it caught in the beginning?
Yeah, why wasn't that in the initial design?
I can't answer that, the engineer, engineer that designed it, uh. I guess, uh, city code, they, what happened is they separated two systems, they wanted ISU. Be metered separately, well, you know, Jackson County Fairgrounds. Which threw this larger disconnect in. And I had to be outside to do that.
When you're, when you're referencing engineer, you're talking about Rick, is that correct?
No, it's different architect.
This was a different architect?
Yeah, Joker, I, I'm consulting.
Okay.
And Gary Anderson, uh, SKA.
And you said you took it to the board, the million, uh, the board and they approved this?
Yeah, they're aware of it, because they wanted to split the electrical. Services between ISU and the Jackson County Fairgrounds.
So the, so the need for this circuit disconnect is because they want their own meter?
Yeah, yeah, they agreed that it's a separation and it had to be an outside disconnect.
Okay, so, I mean, that makes more sense, and it just made it sound like somebody's gonna stop and. Like in parody, you know, in past projects, you know, whether it's this project or other, having to eat just oversights, you know.
I represent you, so.
I know, but that's where I'm just kind of like, you know, you, you catch a lot of grief or whatever, you know, if it's. The, the separation, well, then we could argue, why did they?
Yeah.
Identify they needed separate wiring when they were going after the fact.
Yeah, and that's why I try to keep all the correspondence and stuff, was that, you know, we're going through it. That way you have a way to run back and see how we got there, so. Uh. Do you announce the fees for this one too?
They haven't made a motion.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You need a motion for the change order first, correct?
Right.
Will do approve. I have a motion and a second to approve the change order for Jackson to the Fair and ISU extension as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose name, motion carried.
With that being said, I need a motion to approve invoices for five thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and nine cents. To Midwest Construction Consultants. Ninety-three thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents to Peak Construction. Twenty-eight thousand five hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents to Hometown Plumbing in Haiti. Fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty cents to Crawford Company. A hundred and twenty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty Inc. Two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars to the selective insurance for Bill Bruce Risk Insurance. Twenty-six thousand to Advance Pre-Cast Company Inc. For a total of a hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. And authorized the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU slash four-H Outreach Center for the month ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
What was that? Oh, okay, I didn't hear you were.
Sorry.
I got a motion and a second to approve the invoices, uh, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose name, motion carried.
Yeah, they're, they're coming along very well over there and we were able to pick up some pretty bill. From, uh, I would give we.
Uh, I signed that one. You, you want this one back or sign it?
Yeah, probably give one back.
I delivered it.
Yeah.
That list of purchase, uh, change, purchase orders or whatever that you were gonna, but when do we expect that?
I'm gonna try to get it together by next week.
Okay, anything else, John, or for John, questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, just to clarify.
Would you just state your name, sir?
Uh, Jim Crocker, your office, um, it's just clarify the retaining wall issue. Um, was the excavation and removal of material out of the grounds, was that for the footprint of the project? The parking area or just a contractor here?
It was originally, it was ex- the excavation wasn't including the retaining wall.
Okay.
So that excavation is included, the excavation that's not included is that we got a. Uh. Then for Spiegel that we could go back on his property and lower that slope, so we didn't have.
Yeah, there, there was a maintenance agreement entered with Spiegel along that, to maintain that, to slope it. So if there's a slope, if we're sloping it, why are we talking engineering for a retaining wall in there?
We, we, we eliminated.
Okay.
Let's look, what we're trying to do is get the engineering done. To identify the civil engineers, so they can grade it.
Okay.
Control points, how much you're taking out here, that's.
And there's a hundred and fifty thousand proposed.
No, no, uh, no, we don't have a price there.
Okay.
That'd be substantially less.
Yeah.
The original retaining wall was a hundred and fifty.
Okay, the original was, okay, right.
Originally, they were saying during the bid process, I was getting calls all the time. That it was gonna be up around this and it couldn't be built the way it was designed for the civil engineer and this and that.
Okay, no.
So it was pulled out, that was shot.
Yeah, absolutely.
And also I've been getting several calls on your. Solar system, have you gotten a call from any of them?
They presented in here.
They were in here a lot, two weeks ago, I believe.
So the RFP did go out on June first.
So, I mean, we've got, we've got the notice that they didn't get the twenty-five thousand grand.
The ten thousand. Well, then I'm getting calls and you're saying that. It's different and I'd rather not go on the roof. I mean, I, I went to the city and applied for a variance, so we, remember we went to the city. Applied for the variance, so we had to move that steel building over. Uh, closer to the road, so we can use that east side. If you put it on the roof, then if you ever go to replace that roof, you're gonna have to take it back down or something, you know.
That northeast corner, I thought that was gonna be a retention for stormwater drainage out.
And I, and I. That's just, it's gonna be, uh, area where the water comes down through, but it's not, not, uh, not a retention. That's just, it's gonna be, uh, area where the water comes down through, but it's not, not, uh, not a retention basin.
Thought I heard that, that as it comes off the hillside, part of that would flow towards the. The south into the parking lot, there's gonna be like a swell or a little drainage ditch. On the whole east side of the jail, part of it will drain to the north and it kind of, uh, collected it could drain.
It will just slowly drain every area, so it won't set there for a big time.
Is it gonna drain between the two buildings or two, right?
Yeah, the, the part of it would come up through the parking lot, but main parking.
So you think there's enough room on the east side of that building? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and then the other guy, he's talking, he said, Jesus Christ, you put twice as many on your metal building. That way if you ever wanted a battery or something, you know, battery array because. You're selling it back, that's money and. I don't know, he's going on and on, so I said, call you, basically. I mean, I, I don't have anything to do with buying on that thing, but.
Well, I thought we talked several times about putting it on the roof and nobody had an issue with that.
They did, yeah, they said that it was structurally sound enough.
But I asked you also if we had to do either extra bracing or anything for it, and you said no.
Don't have to do any extra bracing, but now they're trying to fully securing it to the roof and such, which.
Well, they told us they did secure. Just sits there.
I don't know what's a guy going on here, I'm like, uh. So I sent him the plans, I said, I don't wanna use your site and that's where the RFP somehow. My name's out there and they call me and I, I don't know what, what RFP, I haven't even seen her, so.
Can I interject?
Shoot bet.
Okay. So Bruce Fisher is part of the Jackson County Energy District and I worked with Bruce last week to get the RFP out for this. And what they did is they mimicked the same IFP that they used for the Herschel Turker Center. So the project description, according to the RFP that was emailed out last week to eight companies. Is to engineer, design and install a roof mounted PV solar array based on the criteria listed below. And it goes on, and it does mention here several places. Um, to requesting proposals for a turnkey PV roof mounted solar array. Uh, forty kilowatt roof mounted solar array, I mean, they talk about this all over. And I, and the reason that we used you is because they did wanna know about, since this is new construction. They did wanna know who the construction manager is. I did give them your name and your cell number because. You know what? I don't know about the roof. I have no, I'm an auditor. I have no idea about the roof.
They were asking more about the soul or they said on the ground they can tell that are all sun better or something like.
Well, and so I also gave them Bruce Fisher's name. I've talked to two, um, companies. I gave them also Bruce Fisher's name. And that was the question, would the county allow a, a brown mount versus a roof mount? And I said, I know nothing, so.
So what, I guess with that being said, with the utility building, is there a possibility to put it on the utility building roof?
Oh.
Yeah, that, that's.
I don't think there's trusses for that utility building can support the weight.
I, I don't know what the wage is, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't.
I looked at it in my office, they're like, I don't think your roof can hold. That was their immediate reply.
This guy thought it could, so I, I, I don't know, I couldn't tell you, there's some. Discussions out.
I just think if you put it on the east side of that utility building, you're gonna block all the afternoon sun from that. Unless it's further toward the middle between the two buildings, go ahead, Brett.
Sheriff Brent Kilbride, what if, just an idea, I'm zoning out, maybe there's some reason you can't, could you put it at the southern edge of the parking lot? On, you know, legs obviously facing the south.
Um, and also use it for parking underneath it, we talked about that.
Thought about carports, but then you have to make it into somewhat of a carport, but then you have the risk of maybe somebody hitting one of the legs. But if it was just along the southern edge of the, at the edge of the lawn and. Parking lot, that work, and then maybe you can do it on the west side as well, granted, you know. The west won't get it until the sun comes around the west, depending on how, you know, big it's gotta be.
Block the view of your, your brand new jail.
Yeah, for the west it will.
True, but only a little bit.
I just saw we had this all ironed out, that it was going on the roof without an issue.
This is news to me, I didn't know.
Yeah, you're gonna have some blockage up there too, you know, you got quite a few.
Yeah, but they're gonna be.
Is there a particular reason why you don't want it on the roof? Thirty, thirty years from now, when none of us are here, they might have to move it?
Uh, they'd have to take it down, but the roof.
I don't care.
Well, I mean, the thing is, sure, if it's not structurally mounted to that roof, uh, it, it don't sound like a big issue to me. I, I don't. Maybe, now, maybe I don't know.
And did anybody talk to you, Jake, about the timeframe?
Uh, no.
Somebody was thinking that that was unreasonable.
Yeah, I just meant I was getting questions in there, bringing around.
What was unreasonable?
The timeframe of try, try and get it to be installed and completed, because it does have a completion date by.
The RFP does?
The installation shall begin as soon as possible and shall be completed no later than September thirtieth.
Cause that's the end of the third quarter, because there's something about a grant.
The one grant.
There's one grant.
What Bruce wanted.
Right. When's the roof gonna officially be done?
Uh, it's gotta be done by middle, end of July anyways.
Okay, so then they just gotta set a solar panel.
Well, so the way that the, the timeframe of this RFP that went out is everything did go out June first. Bids are due by three PM on June thirtieth. We will have a public bid opening here on July third at nine thirty. Um, you'll be able to talk to the, to the contractor, whoever is the apparent bidder, the potential bidder on. Anywhere from July fifth through July tenth. And then on July eleventh, it's scheduled that you can either accept or reject all bids at ten AM. That's the timeframe of the meeting.
And it might take me two weeks to get that, cause I'd rather sit down when I get escorted than purchase orders and tied up there. Meeting next week, the following week, we sit down, that way we can go over and answer any questions to. I'm already getting some poses in for someone.
Good, what are you gonna do the RFP for the extension of the sewer in the? In the, uh.
Oh, the storm sewer, I mean, I sent out the RFP and I'm gonna see.
When?
I had, I got the control points from Alex the other day, so I gotta get him on, uh, Bruce builders or Steve Clark.
Will you do the one for the, the, the law, the, the retention wall and?
No, no, you get those whole mess, right? Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to get that, I'm gonna meet with Jason Leavers, stay with Katie and me, Blackwood, talk to him about.
I just don't see an issue with that, with that, when we designed it at three percent, I, I mean, I, I, I can't visualize what that is, but it looked like a. Gradual slope to me.
We, I can pull a tape down there, it's not that big a slope, so. It's a matter of getting the excavator, wanting control points, so you can do it digitally and Alex getting. The control points, you get two, or it's two, three.
Cool, thank you.
All right, appreciate you, okay, we'll be in contact.
I guess I, why everything, I guess.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so, thanks, John.
I'm sorry.
I can deal with Marty.
All right, thank you. Marty?
Yes.
Are you available?
Morning.
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 I finished up in the. The IT office, the HR office and the zoning office. I checked with them this morning, everybody's pretty shepherd Bjorn, but everybody else said they were. Good to go. Um, I repaired the wall where we took the cabinet out. Now, got that done, I'm gonna paint the whole wall because. The paint, even though I did paint it a couple, three months ago, the paint that I got is just a odd. Little difference, so I'm gonna paint the whole wall and Becky's gonna, got a cabinet from the hospital and we're gonna. Remount them on the wall there. Um. The, I got a drip in the janitor closet, I'm probably gonna end up buying a new faucet for it. I got one, but the, the faucet part was too long and it wouldn't go inside the, the sink, so, uh. And I can't get parts for the existing one because it's fifty-eight years old. Or sixty-five years old, I don't know that. Um. I trimmed the hedges out here. Um, the parking lot is complete, the lines are painted. I thought he did a very, very nice job. Um, but that's my opinion.
A question, like, where the supervisors park on Tuesday? It looks like it all slopes toward the building.
It does, and then it goes back toward the floor drain.
Hits the curb and goes to the.
Floor drain, yes. I didn't design it, so if you got questions there, you talk to Mike, but he says it'll work, cause when he showed it to me. I asked that same question, what it's doing is it's dividing it here, so that goes that way and that goes that way.
And on the south side of the courthouse, it goes slopes down and goes to the west, is that correct?
Yes, half, about half of it.
Okay, and the rest is gonna come out here and go across the, the lawn?
Right, uh, just, just what won't go down the drain, it's just up from here to the. Bro, is my understanding.
I guess we'll need rain to find out.
Yeah, well, I was gonna take the garden moves out there, but.
Don't worry, someday.
There's sure would today, cause I mowed my hay yesterday. Everybody's saying, anyway, um. The part of out the handrail that's behind the dumpster is all rusted off. I'd like to work on repair net and. I kinda got a price on some iron to make it again. Um, it'd be like three to four hundred dollars, would that be okay? Uh, it goes from the ramp around behind the dumpster until the diagonal sidewalk.
So. As the regulations, what it has to be, so you can't crawl through it or anything like that, or just, are we just putting a rail there for safety purposes to? Okay, so there's no requirements per se that we have to have.
Not that I'm aware, but I would check on that before I built it, yes.
Okay, and then we also talked about redoing that stairs or ramp at one time because. Approved.
Yeah, somebody wanted to tear it out with steps in it.
Yeah, because it was too steep for OSHA requirements, if I remember right, or something.
That I'm not aware of. I just know somebody mentioned it should have steps in it. It's really nice to have the ramp, so when you drag some miles basement, you can pick it up, that's how we're bringing it up out of there. Uh, if you put steps in there, that would eliminate that. But that's a board decision, I guess.
Well, uh, if we're gonna make a decision on railing, I would say go ahead with plans of it, let it come here.
Yeah, it'll basically be the same thing, but.
Is it a pipe now, just like to the concrete?
Yeah, and, but I might make it out of square tubing. I might measure out, cause I have some square tubing, but I don't have enough, okay? Um. My new employee started last week, um, he's working out rather well. We sat down, uh, right now I have two janitors. So I'm having him go through the, each office individually. Until the people are there to thorough, thoroughly clean it, and then that way when Mike leaves. He knows where he's at and what he's gotta do, you know, he knows he's cleaned that. Um, each day we present a little more to him. Um, took him over to the Penrose Annex yesterday, showed him what's gotta be done over there and stuff like that. Uh, got a lot of compliments on his work, very nice gentleman. Um, we really appreciate it.
Is he gonna go around like with Mike for a few days and do a whole routine of what Mike does? How are you gonna handle?
I think we're just gonna start him out on his own, um. Just, I don't know, to me, the best way to learn how to clean is just do it on your own. Uh, there, cause there, there's not really a routine here, because someday you gotta spend more time here than you do there. Um, I told him if he ever has a question to ask one of us. Even after Mike leaves, you know, don't ever be afraid to ask me a question, okay? Um, the air in Lisa's back office wasn't working good. Uh, we cleaned the filters and stuff in it, which they were okay, but it was, took a pound of debris on. And I think we do that about every year on that. Little split unit, so, but it's working now. Um, same problem at the. Penrose Annex, they didn't have air for a couple days. It was a relay, but they hotwired it until they get the relay part in. Um, but they do have air. Um, I'm having problems with the shower in cell forty-one. First, it wouldn't. Um, the hot water wouldn't come on, it was just all cold water, so then I went over and cooked it, it vibrated apart in the inside. So I tightened it up and put lock tight on it. And now it's leaking out the stem, I don't know, I got, I went over there this morning to check it out. When I get done here, I'll go back and look at it. Um, down at the senior citizen building, um. Changed a bunch of light bulbs, a couple ballast and, uh. Um. I ordered light bulbs, but it takes four weeks to get light bulbs here. A case of them, so I went out to Tyson's and bought a few to get a spy. Uh, when the other ones come, will, will, were changed, they're all working now except for the two that they need to balance. And I talked to John Keys about the, uh, window. Um. Instead of putting it through the bearing wall, this concrete block. I suggested we move it to the east wall of his office. In the little room, east wall that, in the hallway that you go to the courtroom. Because it is not a bearing wall and it. It's a soft brick, it's called pyro bar, it's like chalk. And it's a brick like this where we could just drill a hole through it, take the saws off and cut it. Instead of jackhammering or hiring somebody to cut the other one, and he thinks that'll work. Uh, he said he'd get ahold of you as the chair, come up and show you for sure what he wants, make sure it was okay with everybody. Um, you told me to get a price on the window and stuff like that, do you want that now? Or, you know, I do.
Well, I was liking an estimate of what you thought it would cost for you to do it, yeah.
Okay, so the window itself is like seventy-four hundred and ten dollars. This is a window that is forty inches wide and thirty-eight inches tall. If you, this is a standard window, if you want the forty-eight by forty-eight, then it's gonna be more. I have, I.
This is a service window, though.
Yes, 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 and it has a speed hole and it's the level four bullet rating and everything. Excuse me, like they asked for, it has a speed, speed hole here, I'll just let you, you can kinda see it. If you pass it around, um. With the, it's got a stainless steel tray and the frame is aluminum.
And it's gonna go on the east wall of the, the, uh, Justice, like New Office Center?
Correct.
And that's where the benches were?
Correct. We thought we could slide the benches there to the door of the. I don't know who's in that office now, juvenile probation officer.
Yeah.
And then if we put the window clear in this corner and we think that'll work.
Okay, and then what about the window between the two offices?
They want that out also. I don't, he's gonna, again, talk to the board and I told him to make.
That's minimal partition, whatever is in.
I think that's just, I, if I remember right, I put two by sixes in there or two by fours and put sheetrock just to cover it up. I, you know, it's been twenty five, some years, I can't really remember, but I'm. And I'm not so sure the glass ain't even in there. I think I left the glass in, just built a frame around it. And closed it in and taped it and muddied it and sprayed it.
Now, on face value, I do like moving it to the east wall, because it doesn't make sense to put a bulletproof window with right next to a glass door. That ain't bulletproof.
Right.
And, you know, this will at least get it out of the same proximity. But again, you'd have to, I'd have to go up and take a look just to make sure it works on that wall and all that kinda stuff, but.
It seems like a busy area to me whenever I come to there.
And I agree, and I told that to John, uh, but he seems to think he can make it work. But that's up to you folks and John.
But if you take that window out between, so the secretary could look into the conference room. Um, you could look through that window, through the, the window they want removed and see in the conference. And you would lose some confidentiality type of thing. And you would lose some confidentiality type of thing, if that's a concern.
Uh, isn't that window, the access like this window, wouldn't that be further to the north though and, and, uh?
There's a light switch right here on the, what I'm gonna call the east hallway to the right. As you're going in the court, there's a light switch right here, and we thought we would put it as close to that light switch as we could get it.
Yeah, but if you remove that, uncover that window.
Correct.
You would be able to look clear through into the conference room.
I would think you would be, yes.
For John to see if that's something they want. But then again, are they gonna put anything on the door or you'll be able to see in the door?
Yeah, and they could maybe put a blind there or something in between there. I don't know. We, that, we haven't made that discussion.
So does this window have the film on it too, or just the glass?
Just the glass, yeah. And then it's gotta.
Small version of what they got at City Hall, where they got the voice thing.
I think it's exactly what they got in the P D.
Yeah.
Is what it is. Well, I don't know either about that, but I mean, it's.
I think it's an intercom system that they can talk to.
A microphone thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, this has got a.
Yeah.
I don't know what you call it, speed easier, whatever.
Like it's in the kiosks?
Yeah, okay.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Like in the kiosks?
Yes.
Which doesn't work, so I gotta talk underneath it?
Yeah.
You need to talk, talk louder.
Then I might as well go in.
I mean, those are the questions. I mean, I like your, I like your, your numbers are well, but. It would be just if we make it, if we can make it work and ask John if he'd be okay with people being able to see clear through into the conference room. If he's talking with, you know, people or whatever.
Right, I understand that.
That would be, maybe if you could move it farther to the south, where you don't have that direct line of sight.
Move, all right, so you're, okay. Pick it maybe next to the door of the juvenile probation officer, or that way?
That, just so you can, cause if you uncovered the window between where it was a second ago. And where she is now, soon to be the conference room. If you put it on the north side of that east wall, you would be able to look right in, but if you move it, I don't, maybe there wouldn't be that line of sight.
You'd be looking kind of through the window out the door.
Right, we'll put that here, invite John and take a couple of days to think about it, to make sure when we do it, it's the right decision. My, I guess my, my point was, it's easier to cut the south wall or the east wall versus the north wall. Cause the north wall is foot thick and it is concrete.
So I think.
If the whole building fell down, I'm pretty sure that wall would still be there.
I mean, I guess it's a case where each of us go down and have a conversation with them at some point, right?
Moving forward on this, if this is something we, what, what decide to do, is this something that? You feel you guys can do?
Well, this is what I would like to say. If we put it through the south or east wall. I would have no problem with, but if we put it through the north wall. I told John, it could take us a couple, three weeks to do that. Because we're, we're probably gonna chisel a hole through there, or the other one, we just gonna drill a hole, take the saws off and cut it. And then frame it out once we're done. But yes, I could do either one. I, I feel that we can do either one. Uh, I talked to, uh, Bob, and I think he would be good assistance to helping me. Uh, and I think it's something we can do.
Anything else for Marty? Questions?
Okay, we're having him do some good deep cleaning in the courthouse.
Yes.
Which, from what I'm seeing, yes, it's very good. Are we getting him the supplies he needs to do that?
Yes, I, from the day one, I told him whatever he needs to let me know. Because everybody cleans different, because the supplies we have, he may not like. Here, he working over there in the school, may have something better. We ordered a. A turbo mop or something, I, I. Yeah. Exactly, yeah. And I told him when Mike leaves, he can rearrange the cleaning supplies, whatever he want. Whatever way he wants, whatever works best for him.
I just know at one point we talked about even them, I don't know what it's called. A big rag thing like to do the windows, that you can rag it and then squeeze you in.
It's a fuzzy thing with.
It's not a swiper. It's like.
It's like the, the. Girardi.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, I think.
I told him whatever he wants, let me know and we'll, we'll get it. I got the best of bo, both worlds. I had a janitor back in the day was, was a cleaning fool, so to say. But he just couldn't get along with anybody in the building. And then I got Mike, who could, you could yell at him and he'll turn around, do what you want, and then he'll sit down and talk to you. This guy does both. I mean, he, he's easy to get along with. I think he's gonna be super. I really do believe it. I think there's a group we made a good choice. I do believe.
All right, I appreciate the input and, uh, we'll, we'll move forward. We'll, uh, talk to John and. And somebody just let me know, cause then I'll.
Cause it'll probably take months to get this. You know, cause the door down the secondary road, it's gonna take like eighteen weeks to get that here, that we're gonna change out down there.
Well, let's get these questions aired out with John and then over we can make an interpretation.
Okay?
And Marty, just so you know, we put that kneepad through our side since you didn't wanna pay for it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
You bet. Thanks. Lisa?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May thirtieth, twenty twenty three board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspaper.
Most of that can prove the minutes of the May thirtieth, twenty twenty three board proceedings, as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication decline listing. In the amount of one million, two hundred and twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty six cents.
I'd like that motion, but understand that we already approved most of these, cause this is mostly the jail and the, uh, four H extension office. Over, over eight hundred thousand.
We, we approved the claims for the four H extension, but we do not pay for those. They are not part of.
A lot of, most of this is construction.
You have all kinds of things in there. You're paying for the audit. I mean, you're paying for the loan to, uh, the Jackson County Fair Association. I mean, so there's. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of busy in, in today's claim.
Just adding some explanation when people see this or if they have any question.
All moved.
I have a motion and a second to pay the claims as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Uh, opposed nay, motion carried.
Need a motion to accept, place on file and authorize the shared signature of the county reporters' report of fees collected. For the month of May twenty twenty three in the amount of forty three thousand, two hundred and ninety two dollars and fifty three cents.
Motion to second to approve and place on file the chair and the county registration, state insurance, accounting reporters. Report stays collected for the month of May twenty three, in the amount presented. All those in favor, say aye. I oppose nay, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the morning.
Thank you. All right, moving very long, Luanne? Good morning.
Good morning.
Hope you're feeling better.
I still have a voice, but we're doing better. Okay, all I have today is for you is the calendar. Uh, at eleven o'clock, we have a work session on the county budget. At three o'clock is the Green Space redevelopment meeting at the library or by Zoom for any of you. Everyone has been going to that. At four o'clock today is a workforce board executive meeting by, by Zoom for Don. Wednesday, June seventh at nine A M., um, Daniel will be on radio for just chat. And at four o'clock that afternoon is a Wednesday, is the Wednesday's your possible meeting in Bellevue. That Barbara Abbott was talking about, for any of you that want to go to that. Thursday, June eighth at noon, I tentatively have down Jackson County Area Tourism Association by Zoom. Um, for any of you that wanna go to that. Friday at ten o'clock.
Does that confirm?
No, that's, is a T in front of it on your calendar. That's because he hasn't confirmed it.
Sometimes I see X's and.
Yeah.
You, you had a legend on these two? Okay, um, Friday, June ninth at ten A M. is seven Judicial Department of Corrections in Davenport for NIN. I think you actually go in at nine thirty for the evaluation meeting, right? Monday, June twelfth at seven thirty A M., I tend to have an early childhood Iowa Executive Committee meeting, uh, by Zoom for NIN. The next regular meeting we have, that will be on Tuesday, June thirteenth at nine A M. And at four P M. that afternoon is the Coca River Watershed Management Authorities Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. I think that's all I have for you today.
Okay, any questions or, or Luanne? We have a fireworks man. Is that an old one or is that a new one?
I didn't have one for today.
Okay, any other reports or visits before the board this morning? Did you make the destination I O?
I did.
Yeah?
They're working on moving forward with that. It's kinda going slow. They're. The bridge getting everything lined up with the D O T and everything the way they want.
Sixty four.
To the trail to connect on sixty four there and to have a walkway across. Connecting beside the bridge.
Josh and Nathan over at the camp. We've been treading in. Fill me in a little bit.
So they're working on that. They do have the disc off. The holes are mapped out. Um, they've got some trees planted. Hopefully they survive this lack of rain here. They're basically kinda some smaller trees that a lot of them were. Moved in this fall. They'll be working on some larger trees now that they know where all of the. Rings are gonna be at, and when they do that, that, they'll have to probably run like a tree spade and do them because they're gonna be larger. And again, they'll be kinda more transplanting versus. Buying new. Iris, we had our meeting, that kinda just moving forward with all the projects. The, they were supposed to do. Lettings on that, or the building. Undressers that got, um, postponed due to making sure they had all the requirements in the bid. Before they opened them, so that'll be pushed back to, I believe, the next. Meeting, that they'll be doing the openings on them. Other than that.
Well, the tech group was just basically talking about R T A and the county trying to find ways to find more, uh, users. As stands while we're working with the, uh, the. The seniors center, they're gonna be doing field trips. That is certainly doing. And we're providing rides for people down to the farmer's market and things like that, which is trying to increase rides.
Are they, are they staffed? As needed, or is there a shortage there too somewhat?
There's always a shortage, but they have what they need.
Okay, any other visits before the board? Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.